Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is April the 17th, 2018. It's 6:00 PM. We are here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon James Long with the Granbury Gideon Camp to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilperson Reiner. All rise, please.
Please pray with me. Our heaven Father, we just give you thanks today for your love, for your mercy, for your grace, for all the things that you've given us in this life. We thank you, God, that we are Americans and we have the freedom to feed and assemble as we do. We just ask you, Lord, to be in our presence tonight, that you would just give us calmness over the things that are said and done, that you might lead us, that we might represent each and every one in the city of Granbury. We just thank you, Lord, that you allow us to do these things. And we just ask you now to go with us, lead us and guide us, and when you're through with us in this life, take us home to leave with you. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance. And to the Texas flag. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, one God, one individual.
I think we're finally going to have some summer weather here in Texas, or in Granbury anyway, huh? Thank you, yes. This time, we're going to move into the consent agenda. Those items being the number one, consider approving the city council meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2018. Second one being consider approving an agreement for a lease of space between the Texas A&M Forest Service for the city of Granbury. There again, they went through the fee changes, so that was posted there. Number three was to consider authorizing the sale of surplus property through an online auction. I think this is one we haven't had in a while, so there's a lot of items on there. Consider adopting a form for submitting written allegation for official misconduct against members of city council pursuant to the ordinance number 17-63. If you had an opportunity to look at that, it's pretty self-explanatory. Number five was to consider executing a FIA agreement, the Facilities Improvement Agreement, between Tri-County Development and the city of Granbury, Texas, in a total amount of $723,193.05 to allow for the construction of water and sewer facilities in order to construct the Meander Estates Phase 2, Section 1, and connect the water to the new Meander Elevated Storage Tank. Those concludes the consent agenda items. Council, you had an opportunity to look these items over. Are there any changes or questions on any of these items, or any items that you wish to pull off of the consent at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Amen.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. I heard him louder, and Mr. Corrigan down there got a second out. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Those consent agendas are approved. Next, we will move into the deliberation agenda, the first item being a report on the progress related to the strategic plan for Lake Granbury Conference Center. Chris, do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Kyle Smith, our manager at the conference center, has put together a report, and when he gets it queued up and ready to go, I'll turn it over to him.
I'm queued up and ready to go.
There you go, Kyle.
Good evening, Council. Sorry it's taken me so long to make a presentation to you. We've had a few challenges in my first few months here at Lake Granbury Conference Center, but we are doing what I've told my staff we were going to do all along, and we're changing the culture at the conference center. So I wanted to go through a few things with you so that we can talk and you can better understand our mission at the conference center going forward. The first thing I wanted to do is, I want to thank everybody for their unbelievable support for Lake Granbury Conference Center. It's always easy taking on a new person in a role with that responsibility, but I've got to say that everyone has been very forthcoming, very welcoming, and, you know, it's not like that in all cities. So I do appreciate the support from not only the council, from the city staff, also from our partners at Hilton Garden Inn, at the Granbury Hospitality Association, Granbury Bed and Breakfast Association, HGMA. I could go on for another 30 minutes on all the associations that have been very welcoming and that have opened their doors to us and what we want to do. One of the first things that I was saddled with when I came to the conference center was that we needed to reduce the deficit. Something we've all talked about. It's something that's not uncommon in the conference center and convention center world. I know that in the three-year plan, we want to get that deficit down to $200,000, and I want to get that down even further. So we are taking steps to try to reduce that deficit by going out with an active sales approach, and I'll get into a little bit more of that in a minute. One of the other things we're doing is we're also leveraging our technology to help improve our productivity and our sales. We've used Facebook to this point because it's really our only means of social media. However, we have made a partnership on our new website that I'll discuss here in just a moment. But what I wanted to talk about first, and probably what I will talk about in the most detail, is our line sales plan execution. What we have to do at the Lake Granbury Conference Center is complex, but in the end, very simple. We have been lacking in outside sales and marketing effort for quite some time. For whatever reasons, reasons that were there long before I was here, we haven't been out and been able to get out and actively sell the conference center. And that is something that has already changed and will continue to evolve during my tenure with the conference center. You know, we talked about the deficit a little bit, and by being more active in our sales and marketing efforts, I do think that we will be able to hit that deficit reduction, and I hope even sooner than planned. But the plan is right now to stay on that three-year level to try to get our deficit down. You know, and it's a hefty deficit to look at. It's something that, when you see that number, it's a large number, and it's a lot to take on, but I think I have the crew and the staff and the support to do it. When we have the ability to sell, it's going to take everything down. It's going to take the deficit down. It's going to take the room rentals up, and that's what we're looking for. One of the other hot buttons when I took the job was to bring in the Sunday through Thursday business. And when you have a niche center like we do, because we can only hold a certain amount of people, you really have to go out and do your research and talk to those conferences and conventions that may not know that we have a state-of-the-art facility that's almost 10 years old. Our value, and let me tell you a little bit about analyzing the industry. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. We constantly, constantly search for conferences and conventions that will fit in our conference center, and some that may even be a little bit too big. Because my sales thought has always been, if we reach out to them, if we show them exactly what we can do as a conference center, and it's determined that that particular client can't fit in, they're going to tell 10 people about the service, about the sales effort that we have. And so I think by reaching out to even those conventions that might be a little bit larger, we can still get ancillary business into that conference center, which is what we're looking for. We're looking for business. Our customers are simple. Our customers are anybody who wants to have an event. Anybody. From weddings, birthdays, to full-blown conferences, to, you know, any kind of trade show, those are our customers. Anybody that's a member of an association, which I'm sure all of Council, I know a lot of our city leaders are members of a lot of different groups, those are our customers. Because even if you have a local association, there's a regional association that goes with it, there's a state association that goes with it. We want to reach out to all of them and make sure that they know that we're here, and we will give them the best service possible. Our competitive advantage is very simple. All you have to do is look outside the garage doors. There are no conference centers that I'm aware of that have the type of view that we have, that have the type of accessibility that we have to downtown, that have that type of accessibility to the city. Our competitive advantage is the view that we give people. Our sales and marketing plan is really simple, and this is probably what a lot of people want to hear. What we do, sales and marketing-wise, is a simple process. We find conferences, conventions, and other business that we think would be good for the conference center, that we think would fit. We reach out to them. We talk to them. We have conversations via email, phone, and we invite them up, or we make ourselves available to go to them. If we need to speak to a board of directors, if we need to have the head of the board of directors come to us, we are making those phone calls. We are trying to get people to come see Granbury, and if not, we will go to them and talk about Granbury. Once we've shown them around, once we've shown them everything good with the conference center, shown them what will work, we reach our hand out and say, "We want your business. We want you here. We want you in Granbury. Do we have a deal? Will you come to Granbury and be a part of this great city?" And it's really that simple. It's a dedicated sales effort that myself, my sales director, and at some point, my new event coordinator will all be a part of. It is really that simple of a sales effort. The brand identity name change, this has been something that's been a long time coming. Our name change is complete. We are now the Lake Granbury Conference Center. Our new lettering's up, as you can see in the photo. Now, the next steps to brand are, we have to get new marketing material, which I will address a little bit later in the presentation, but we also have to make the players in the event world aware that we have a new name, that we are going in a new direction. So the steps to the brand are making everyone aware that we now have a new name, a new outlook, a new culture. Our enhanced marketing partnerships with HGI, VGI, the local hotel industry. You can see, our partnership with Hilton Garden Inn has never been better. You know, they know that any time that they need to come over and talk to us, we're always there. If we need to go talk to them, you know, they make themselves available. So it's really a great partnership, especially due to the proximity. We've met with Visit Granbury recently. We met with Teresa and Ashley on April 5th, and then I was invited to the Visit Granbury Board to speak for a few minutes on April 11th, and just gave them an overview of what the conference center is about and what we hope to accomplish. Some of my first visitors at the conference center were hotels, and I've had continued conversations with the hotels and now with the Bed and Breakfast Association about what the conference center can do to help with the hotel occupancy. It's an ongoing conversation. I wish there was one simple answer, but we are having those conversations. They are healthy conversations, and we hope to help all of the hotels, all of the bed and breakfasts, everyone involved, because it helps everyone in the long run. It helps the city, helps the hot tax, it helps the merchants in Granbury Square, it helps the merchants all over the city. So we are continuing those conversations to see what we can do better and maybe what we can partner with. I've spoken a couple of times also to the HGMA, the Historic Granbury Merchants Association, more of an update fashion, but we want to stay involved with them so that they know what is going on with the conference center, so that they know what events we have coming in and what kind of foot traffic they may see down in the square. As I mentioned before, the promotional and sales material. We are currently redefining our promotional and sales material with the name change, and we've also entered partnership with Green Fox Marketing to complete our website. So we're on a, hopefully on a 10-week plan to finish the website top to bottom. We have started work on a new logo for the Lake Granbury Conference Center, but the promotional materials are also part of our package with Green Fox. So once we get the logo and once the website begins the build, we will also work on our marketing materials that will be a little bit more forthcoming. We want people to know what we charge, the amenities we have, and what they can expect when they come to the conference center. The media advertising program, this one's a little more interesting to me just because we held an event in March called Grand Mary. Some of you may have heard of it. We did our own bridal show at the conference center, and we did a lot of marketing to try to make that show a success. We had a lot of built-up advertising capital with LKCM Radio, which is 92.1, and Hank FM. We did some advertising in the Granbury Showcase Magazine. We also did our own, we did a social media blast with Hood County News, and then we also did our own Facebook advertising. And I'll tell you, any free community calendar that was out there, I also posted it there too. I'm not above free advertising at all. So we did spend a little bit of our marketing budget, not too much, but we also took in, we took in funds from the vendors, and I just wanted to share a couple of those numbers with you. I know I'm reporting on the first quarter, but I thought you might find this interesting. Over half of the vendors that we got for Grand Mary were from Facebook. Over half. We reinvested all of the vendor registration money into Facebook ads, into the Granbury Showcase Magazine, Hood County, and our existing ads. Our relevant industry association membership, we have a very good partnership with Texas Association of Venues and Facilities. We are also exploring memberships with the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau and Meeting Planners International. That will be a big one. That's going to be a little bit of an expense, but the meeting planners are who we want to talk to. We're going to continue to work and train through the Texas Municipal League, who has been good to the conference center, and we're also exploring memberships and advertising partnerships with The Knot and Wedding Wire, because we are getting more requests for weddings and receptions every single day. The building improvement schedule, I don't think I'm breaking news here. We need an AV upgrade. I didn't pause for applause, but it's something that's been a long time coming.
They approved the agreement in the last meeting, okay? They know about it.
We now have an AV upgrade. We did replace a couple of TVs upstairs through Datavox. They gave us great service, and now we're going to partner with them to get a full AV upgrade in the convention center. The convention center standard for AV upgrades is about seven to eight years, and as I mentioned before, the conference center is 10 years old this year. So it's well overdue. I think the folks that attend the conference center events in the future will really enjoy those. Quarterly performance. October through January, we had 29 events in the building, four local events, 18 repeat business, three from inquiries, and five from the city of Granbury. That totaled 5,132 attendees and 165 hotel room nights. Those are only the hotel room nights that are included in the hot tax. The room rental rate was $47,900 during that period, and there was $11,525 in city-approved discounts for room rentals. Our projections for fiscal year 2018, we're going to have around 93 events, most likely up over 100, because these are only projections, and I don't like playing with fantasy numbers. We should have 115 total usage days, at least. We're looking at about a little over 19,000, probably upwards of 20,000 attendees, which will total right now about a little over 1,900 hotel room nights. The room rental rate for the fiscal year will be about $171,000 and change, and the city-approved discounts for room rentals will be almost $75,000. And now I am available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Kyle. Council, is there any questions or thoughts for Kyle there?
Mayor.
Council couch.
Thanks, Kyle, for being on this presentation. I heard a lot of enthusiasm and that you're talking to lots of different people. What I would like to understand is, if you could have your ideal client, customer, who would that be?
My ideal client or customer would be a client that stays in the building for 364 days a year and has breakfast, lunch, and dinner with us, utilizes all of our AV. I mean, I wish I had a different answer, but that's the ideal customer. We have a client that was with us the past two weeks called K-12, which is a testing for homeschool children, and they rent out the upstairs of the conference center, and they pay us regular rental rates, and we go up and unlock the doors for them, and then we go up and unlock the doors when they leave. That's a pretty good customer right there.
Okay, well, your answer does concern me. If you don't know who your ideal customer is, how can you hone in on them if you don't know who that is?
Sure, sure. Our ideal customer is any conference or convention that will fit inside the conference center that wants to bring their business to Granbury.
Okay. And so how do you, that number would be what?
Every day.
As far as people you can accommodate in a given conference?
Well, it depends on, it depends on a lot of factors, Councilman. There's the seating issue, if they're at round tables, if they're in a theater. We set up the downstairs of the Lake Granbury Ballroom in a theater setting for 500 and had room with a stage and everything else. So it really just depends on the configuration.
I'm still looking at identifying the ideal customer.
Okay.
Because, you know, we went through this four or five years ago with the Hilton. I don't know if you saw that study, and I think the sweet spot was 250 or so that we could bring in during the middle of the week, preferably. So I would be looking for a strategy in which to go after that customer, and it'd be very specific on how you would do that.
I could interject a little bit here. They are going after that midweek conference, working with TML and working with the other associations. There are approximately 26 affiliate members to TML, and they're reaching out to all of those, and they bring in anywhere from 100 to 200 people, and they spend overnight and those kind of things. But, you know, for what he's doing, he's right on track. He's following what we're asking to do, is market that facility as many nights of the week as possible and days as well, but we're looking, our weekends are easy to book. What we're looking for is that midweek conference, and we're working to achieve that. And that's part of the sales approach, is to send out salespeople to go take care of that and recruit that and bring them in.
Okay. And so tell me specifically, if we're sending out salespeople to go after those conferences, what are they doing? How often are they gone? Where's their leads? How does that all happen?
Well, I can tell you, the leads are generated through me. I look for specific conferences and conventions that may be looking for a home in '19 or '20, and I provide those leads. Now, right now, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Right now, we haven't been able to get out and sell as much as we want. It's been a lot of calling, emailing, reaching out to those clients, but we have reached out to several that we've offered to go down and talk to their board of directors to see if they want to come up and visit the facility, or have them come to us, you know, in our marketing budget to try and win that business. So the leads are coming from me, and it's through pretty much exhaustive search from conventions, even Google searches of conventions looking for homes.
And also, you got to realize that he hasn't been here long enough to book a conference for this year, because those things are usually booked 12 months in advance. And so like with, and also what conference business does, is they'll send out, after they find out who you are and you get on their radar, these event planners for different organizations, they will send out a request for information, and he'll be working those through his sales team, and hopefully will visit Granbury in the future, and we'll make those things almost simultaneous. It'll just be a, but we've got to get our name to those event planners. And so by doing that, they're going to go to some conferences, they've already, we budgeted for that anyway, and go to some places where meeting planners gather and mix among them and get your name out there, because we really are unknown by a lot of people.
And to tag on to the end of that, that's why I mentioned Meeting Planners International, because that's one of the many organizations that we need to be a part of. The meeting planners, especially in the area, need to know who we are. And I say in the area, I mean in the state of Texas and even the border states.
Well, I totally agree, and I can't, you know, as far as having an asset that is unique, that people would love to be here, I mean, I don't think there's a second, you know, as far as desire to be here, if you had a, you know, a corporation that had 100 people or whatever that is, I mean, what a great place to have that. So this year, what do you actually have scheduled as far as meetings you're going to attend this year as far as these organizations outside of Granbury?
We've got, for this year, we are going to, Connect Texas actually falls outside of this year, but we'll attend Connect Texas again, and we're also talking to HMAI about attending one of their conferences. So we're still researching what conferences we need to be a part of, but I know that MPI is on the top of that list.
All righty. Thank you.
Council, any more questions? Kyle?
Mayor, I got a couple.
Councilman Allen.
Kyle, thank you for coming. Thank you and Chris for preparing this. You know, we used to get a report on a quarterly basis that showed the bookings, you know, what we had booked, what was coming. This is something that might be important. I kind of mentioned something like that about six months ago and offended some of our employees, and I didn't mean to do that, but this would be important to a councilperson, where if somebody, taxpayer, walks up to us and says, "You all making any money in conference center?" "No." "How many bookings you got?" "Don't know." You know, I'd still like to see the city manager give us that. Also, you'd mentioned a couple of times there that you had a partner, we have a partnership with Hilton. I didn't know we had a partnership with Hilton. I thought we had it with all hotels. Would you explain what the partnership you have with Hilton?
We do have a partnership with all hotels. We have a direct partnership with HGI because of proximity only.
Okay, but you didn't say that. You said we have a partnership with Hilton.
Sure.
And I pray that would offend some of the hotels that have been up here saying they need more business, more business. So I just want to clear it up. We don't have one distinctly with the Hilton, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I would like to add to that, though. To my knowledge, Hilton Garden Inn is the only one with a marketing team that's actually going to events and trying to recruit conferences to be here.
I understand.
And they've done that with us and shared a booth, and we also share some software with them on an annual basis as well.
But, we still should offer to other hotels.
Oh, yeah, by all means, they know that.
I think Hilton's great, and they've been good for our community, I'm not saying that. But, if you look at this on a screen right now, we're gonna have a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars worth of rental rooms coming in, but we're gonna give away seventy-four thousand of that away.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What did you base that on? Twenty-five or fifty or a hundred room nights, or?
It is, a lot of it's based on the hotel matrix, where an event will get discounts for the number of hotel rooms they have. Some of the discounts are, can be city events as well, so those are just the discounts that we show. And obviously, since it's a projection, it can fluctuate a little bit. If a group comes in and says they're gonna have a hundred room nights for three nights, and then they fall below that hundred, obviously, their discount's going to adjust.
Okay, and that is only partnership when they book it, or is that, we can book it to the city and they still get the deal, or to them only?
That is a hotel matrix that goes to any hotel in the city of Granbury. So, if you would like to have your family reunion, and you wanna book a hundred or more rooms, that matrix applies to you.
Okay. I'm not a numbers man, I apologize.
It's all right.
The other question was, I'm kinda following up on Councilman Couch's question. You said you have been reaching out now for, since you've been here a few months, to try to get people here. Besides TML, which we're a member of, the downtown merchants are here in local, who have you contacted, just four or five, that would bring people here, and how many number would you be looking at if they came?
I have a list in my office that I'd be more than happy to share if necessary. There is a list of different groups and conventions that we've reached out to.
Did y'all knock on the door?
Most of your conferences and conventions that we were looking at are around the Austin area or around Houston, so for a lot of them, no, we have not traveled. Now, when I did go to San Antonio for TML training, I did visit with one or two while I was down there, and then when I was in Austin, I visited with a couple as well. But, I can, I'd be more than happy to provide a list of who we've reached out to.
I was just curious. Did you come, your background, your last job, was it with a conference center, or?
Yes, sir, it was with Fort Worth Convention Center.
Whereabouts?
Fort Worth Convention Center.
Can you get any leads from them? They're big.
Oh, yeah.
They got big places, tell them how small ones come see us.
I cannot comment on that at this time.
I think that would be a good lead, myself.
I'm just telling you that I do have some business cards.
Okay. Good man. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'm Pigeon Beck. I'm glad Mr. Allen hit on some of these, because I was heading in that direction. He saved, I think, all of us some time. I think the requested report, I think it's good to see, in all departments here, that he made the request several months ago, that we don't get enough information, in his opinion, we don't get enough information from the department heads on what's going on in this city. So, we get a weekly report of what every department in this city has done. Now, some may read it, some may trust our city manager, and some may do both, but at least we have that if we need it. So, yeah, probably a good idea. The other thing, in Mr. Couch, he asked about, if you don't know who your market is, how do you market to them? I'll follow that with, when you say you promote not only Hilton Garden, but all the hotels in this area. Have you visited with the hoteliers, that's my first question, as a group, and individually looked at the properties involved?
I have, I have not met with the Granbury Hospitality Association as of yet. I have talked with a lot of those hotels involved individually. I have seen quite a few of the properties, and I have met with the Granbury Bed and Breakfast Association.
So, if you look to your right, a lot of these folks are sitting right here. I would encourage you to get their relationship going, and see the properties, because if somebody calls you and says, "Hey, what do you think about Plantation Inn?", and the answer is, "Well, I drive by it every day, but I've never really stopped." It's hardly a sales pitch, and I'm not asking you to sell their properties, but if somebody asks a question, and you know their market is an eighty-dollar room versus a three-hundred-and-eighty-dollar room, at least you can point them in a direction and speak with confidence to the amenities.
Sure.
And so, that's the only thing I would ask, because I've been in sales for years and years and years, and if you don't know what you're selling, how do you sell it? Am I right?
Absolutely.
Those are only two points, and it's relatively basic stuff, but it's all about, if you're working for the city, we just need to know what's going on, so that we can answer those questions, because we get phone calls, too, and it's usually, they're usually not complimenting us on the great job we're doing.
I'm familiar with those phone calls.
And hey, and I'm glad you're here, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
And just to tag on that, Councilman, every client that reaches out to the conference center, whether it's a wedding, birthday party, et cetera, we have a hotels list, and we also have a bed and breakfast list that's provided to every single client. So, at least, they're not left completely in the dark. They know how to get ahold of those properties, but I do understand what you're saying, and I will definitely do that.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would also say to the individual property owners and employees, I mean, our job is to get people here, am I right? Our job is to get people here. Where they stay, that's kinda up to you. So, as a group, we're trying to get as many people here as we can to stay as long as we can, and we will give them all the information they want, but you have to reach out as well. So, all we're asking is, give them the tools to be successful.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd like to read something, Alan. City Manager, Chris Coffin.
So, in our weekly report that you provided, this is what the council received on Friday of this last week. Spoke with Granbury Area Bed and Breakfast Association, discussed ways to partner with the B&amp;B owners. Spoke with the Historic Merchants Association, met with Visit Granbury Board of Directors, discussed first round of logos for Lake Granbury Conference Center with Green Fox Marketing, set up vendor table at Granbury Area Bridle Show, that's held at Grumps, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir.
And...
And it was cold that morning, too.
Little outreach activity locally to promote our stuff. Finalized a list of associations and groups for Lake Granbury Conference Center to join FY 2019. Begined training new events coordinator Shelby Jones. Continued sales outreach effort for LGCC. Begined planning two CVB-type fam tours to prospect events, considering Lake Granbury Conference Center for 2019. So, that's the information, type of stuff we provide every Friday.
Did you say anything about how many bookings?
I understand what you're asking for. We can get that.
Thank you.
But, that's the type of stuff that we've been providing.
I know. And I don't have a problem with that, I just want more.
I do have another question, Mayor, for Chris, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
Chris, on this deal here, where it says ninety-three more events for this year, what percent of those are gonna be in-town customers, and what percent's gonna be out-of-town? What y'all figure that, to get the rooms the way they are?
Kyle.
Was that why you asked, Chris?
For the ninety-three events for the fiscal year, a lot of them are gonna be local. I don't have an exact percentage. I can get that for you and provide that at the next meeting, but right now, a majority of our events and total usage days are local. Not necessarily city of Granbury events, but they are local events.
I just look at the motels at nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-four hotel nights, so that's a lot of nights for in-town people. I'll sleep my own bed.
It is when the event's being planned locally, but they bring people from out of the area.
So, you're gonna say half of them are will be out-of-town events?
I wouldn't say a local event that has out-of-town guests would be an out-of-town event.
So, when they book an event, they ask how many people they anticipate putting in a hotel room. That's where you got that number. And to break it down different than that, it might not be an easy matrix to pull up off his shoulders right now, but whenever they sign a contract for an event, you know, there's that question, because it goes into the pricing matrix, and so, that's where they get that number. And again, this is a projection, so it's plus or minus, you know, area deviation there.
What do we have last year, room bookings? You know, Chris?
Don't know.
We didn't keep track of those numbers, that number last year.
I've got one more question if we finish.
I'm through.
Well, I think it's important to have perspective on the nineteen-hundred room nights. Is there roughly five to five-hundred-and-fifty hotel rooms in town, would you say?
That would probably be a question more for the Granbury Hospitality Association, but...
But, it's in, I think it's in that number, which is two-hundred-thousand rooms a year, to kinda give some perspective.
Sure. It's a drop in the bucket, what we're doing now, but we hope to make a bigger drop in the future.
And whatever you need, please let Chris know, and this council would like to support you in that effort.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And just to clear the record, we don't select room rental on that building, or facility rental, based on who's gonna rent the most rooms. It's who signs up first gets the room. And we can have multiple events in that facility, that's the way it was designed, and it wouldn't be uncommon for somebody to be upstairs and somebody to be downstairs, it's running a different function altogether. So, that's the ideal situation, is we have, in the middle of the week, if we can't have a big conference here, we got little things going on that will consume the use of that building.
We've turned away weekend business. Now, I wanna turn away Sunday through Thursday business, because that conference center's booked.
Yeah.
Counsel. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Not your bag, well. You sit down, I'll put my one out. Next, we're gonna move into item number seven, which will be a report from the Visit Granbury Corporation, and consider all matters related to the current funding agreement between Visit Granbury and the city of Granbury, and this was put on there by Councilman Tony Mobley, so I'm gonna call upon Tony Mobley to kick this off. You would please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a lot of folks in this room, and hey, I'm glad to see people here, are where, kinda where this thing's been headed, and where we've come from over the last several months. I think Teresa was here in February to address the council and talk about the state at the union, if you will. And there were some concerns about the relationship between the hoteliers and the bed and breakfast community with Visit Granbury itself. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we could talk about here. Rest assured, I'm not concerned with what anybody makes, or where the money goes, or any of that, tonight. That'll come later. But, what I wanna be concerned with is, how did we get to this point? Because, two months ago, we pointed out, and just like I did with Kyle earlier, these folks over here that are concerned with what's going on, and you said you were gonna extend the olive branch, and we were gonna do things to mend that relationship. And I wanna know how that's going, because I know I have my interpretation. So, I'll open that up to whoever wants to be the spokesman here, to kind of address that to start out, whether it's Teresa, or Hayes, or anybody else in the group, to kinda give me their feel for how that went.
I'm Hayes Stripling, and most of you probably know me. I'm the chair of Visit Granbury.
Hayes, go ahead and pull that up just a little more, and get it right in there.
All right.
Better?
Thank you. All right. I'll briefly address that, and Teresa maybe wanna elaborate a little bit more. We've done a few things. We wanna do more. Jim Leach and I have met with the hospitality group twice. We've offered to have another meeting, and we probably will. They didn't give us an exact date yet, but it'll probably be maybe next week, or so, just informal discussions about what we can do to work together. We've also put Stephen Garcia on the board, who's a member of that group, as of the last meeting. So, we continue to look for ways that we can work with the whole community, and also with them.
So, okay, go ahead, Teresa.
So, I thought I would share that Ashley and I had a meeting with some representatives of the Hospitality Association. We've also met with the Granbury Area Bed and Breakfast Association. When we met with the hotel group, the handful of them, they had a list of desires, and we have complied with absolutely every desire that they had, and then more. And they indicated they'd like more print advertising. We've done more print advertising. They indicated specific publications, they'd like for us to purchase print, and we've done that, and more. So, the only thing we haven't done is changed some, the word "stay" to lodging accommodations on our website homepage, because there's not room to put that, those two words, instead of just the word "stay." Of all the other requests, we've done absolutely everything, but then we've gone further and done more, and tried to hone in on specific publications that could make a big difference in their business.
Okay, so, hey, I'm glad you addressed, you've addressed all of their concerns, because I have some concerns. So, my take is this, we met in February, I think it was the first meeting I went to is before you came here, is that correct? I went to your board meeting before you came here last time, is that true?
I remember you've been to two board meetings.
Right, February, and then Wednesday, because I was out of town last month.
Yep, that sounds correct.
Okay, and so, my interpretation is this, so I showed up to your meeting in February, and hadn't planned to say anything, and I was successful in doing that, and left. And then I started getting phone calls from board members and concerned folks as to, "Why were you there? What do you want? Are you gonna shut us down?" "Why was I there? Because I'm on city council, and it's our job to kinda, to watch this money and where it goes." "Am I gonna shut it down? I don't plan to. I don't have the power to do that, you know that." "Why now?" That was another question. And the question was, "Why are you asking me this? And the why, why now, and why not before?" Because we can look at each other in the eyes, and we know why the answer was. This wall has been built up around this board, and you've proven it since then, that we don't want other folks seeing what we're doing. And I will continue and say that since then, the hoteliers were told they're no longer welcome to your meetings, even though they're stakeholders. That's how we came to this meeting tonight, because I was told that yesterday when I went, or last week when I went to your meeting. And "Why was I there? Well, apparently, at eight o'clock on a Wednesday morning, I had nothing else to do, so I'm coming to your meeting." And I was invited to leave by Hayes. He said that he had talked to your attorney, and Teresa, you weren't there, but you can chime in whenever you want, and say you disagree or agree. He was told by your attorney that you did not have to allow visitors, and you've chosen to take that, stand with that decision. So, I was asked to leave.
Well, we did consult with the city attorney and some other attorneys on that.
Excuse me. You consulted with the city attorney?
And other attorneys as well.
Okay.
And we were told...
With Jeremy?
Yep. He was at the meeting that you came to, by the way. And we were told that we did not have to hold open meetings, and we chose to close them because of things that we talk about, that we want to maintain confidentiality. Now, we also, and I offered to you the other day, and we had two visitors the day you came, that spoke before we closed the meeting, and we would continue to do that. And as a matter of fact, we have even changed our policy since you came, to where we will hold open meetings going forward.
Okay, so, let's go back to the attorney thing. So, we have an attorney representing the city, and he's representing your group as well. I'm assuming you pay him something to represent you, correct?
No, sir, we didn't pay.
So, the city has a contract with an attorney to represent us, and we're writing the check. So, the city has a contract with an attorney to represent us, and we're writing the check. Does anybody in this group see a conflict of the same attorney representing the people getting the check? Teresa, I'll ask you that.
Wait, wait just a minute, hold on, Jim can elaborate.
Is there a conflict here, we're representing both sides?
We, we don't, the story is not quite right. So, the original-
I'm sorry, I'm just going by what you said.
Yeah, Jim, Jim Leach, everybody knows me.
I'm just going by what you, what you're representing.
Well, so, the first call that was made, to an attorney, was made to an attorney at the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. And that call was to talk to them about whether or not as a 501(c)(6) independent organization, whether we were bound by the Open Meetings Act. He consulted with the three other attorneys that were in that office, and said, "In our view, you are not bound by the Open Meetings Act as a 501(c)(6) independent organization." So, we said, "Okay, that's fine." We decided then that it might be a good idea to get another opinion, because we wanted to be sure. So then we asked Jeremy his opinion, and Jeremy actually talked to the THL attorneys, and they all agreed that as an independent organization of 501(c)(6), we do not have to have, be bound by the Open Meetings Act. So, in the course of that meeting with Jeremy, we got lots of information from him, we consulted again with the THLA attorneys, and they all, and we concluded as a group, as an independent organization, that we wanted to close our meetings, because we wanted to discuss things where, if we all signed a code of conduct and a confidentiality agreement, then we want to keep that information in the board, so we can make sound, informed decisions as a board, to be able to do that. And so that was our decision. And, you know, we're not hiding anything. We, we are trying to be as cooperative with other groups in Granberry as we possibly can. That's why we wanted to put someone like Steve Garcia, and we put him on the board because of his background, not because he, he's a member of GHA. He's got an excellent background in, in doing grants, he's got an excellent background in doing group events, and that's a natural evolution of Visit Granberry, to start looking at things like that, to make sure that we can bring larger groups of people to Granberry. And that was the decision we made, and that's why we made it. Now-
Let, let me stop you.
Okay.
Because I appreciate the narrative we're going here, but let's, let's go back to the, the sound, informed decisions in addressing the concerns of the hoteliers.
Mm-hmm.
Because I have their list of concerns as well, and it has to do with favoritism, accountability, closed doors. Was this never mentioned in any of these meetings with you?
Well, I don't know what your question is.
I'm asking, I'm asking Teresa, because she said she addressed every one of their concerns, and more. And these are the first four things that, that-
One of their, one of their requests-
I'm sorry, Jim, I'm talking to Teresa. Give me just a second, if you will, I, I'm begging you.
Mayor, I don't-
Favoritism-
Hang on, Mr. Allen.
Accountability, closed doors, and general disregard for hotels and bed and breakfast as a whole.
I've never seen that list. The list, the list that was given to me, and the things that we discussed, the day that Ashley and I went to visit with this handful of people, had nothing to do with those topics, had to do more to do with marketing things. So, we talked about marketing projects and programming, we didn't talk about-
Were never mentioned. I will ask this group, was that ever mentioned in your conversation, ever?
You'll have to ask J.C. Stone, Steve Garcia, Oona Pruitt, Penny-
J.C.'s sitting right there.
Well, then you have, I mean, he, and the other nice gentleman from the Best Western was there, and we talked, there was a list of things they wanted to talk about, and that's what we talked about.
So, let's, let's hurry, let's get to the, we're, we're doing everything to cooperate. I've probably been on ten boards of directors in this community, for nonprofits, and, well, and city council, and, we'll exclude city council, because it's, it's a little bit different work. We are going to have open meetings, we are going to have transparency, because we're bound by the law. I have never been on a board of directors where they maybe sign a confidentiality agreement, because they're concerned about what goes on in a board meeting. In fact, in Rotary, they give you an extra star by your name if you show up to a board meeting, because apparently you don't have enough to do in your life, and you're, if you're not on the board, and you show up. I can't imagine what, what secrets you have in this group, and while you don't, there are things that you should do, there's things that you can do, and there's things you have to do, okay? What you have to do, you're bound by the law. What you can do is what you choose to do. What you should do is have everything open, so everything doesn't look like there's these walls thrown up, because that's the perception. I'm not the only one, I'm not, I'm not preaching from the treetops and talking to nobody, because there are plenty of people in this room that I'm getting this from.
May I address that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we're bound by the Open Records Act. So, anytime anybody wants any information about the minutes to our meeting, our financial records, all they do is have to make a request. So, anybody can do that at any time. Hayes and I, you know, and I, I'm going to say this, because it's been true. We have, went out of our way to meet with the Granberry Hospitality Association. We've, we're the ones that have been trying to set up the meetings, we've met with them twice, it might even be a third time, I can't remember now, but we, just as recently as last week, we reached out, and J.C. happened to be in Vegas and couldn't do it, which was fine. But we are continuing to recognize the importance of who they are, recognize their interests and what they want to do, because we share the same interests they do. I think if you were to ask J.C. and the other people, when they met with Hayes the first time, that our shared interests were common, in terms of getting more groups and more people to Granberry. That's absolutely the case. And so, when Steve came to us with J.C. and said, "We want to do more grants, and we want to do grant programs," we immediately, as a board, told Teresa, "That's a high priority, that's something we got, we've got to do, we've got to do." So, to say that we're putting a wall around them is, is just not a true statement. And, and so, we're working really hard to work with everybody who wants to bring more groups to Granberry. And, and we're working with them to help craft that, and now that Steve's on the board, he's going to bring that experience to us. I mean, when we were at our last board meeting, not last board meeting, board meeting before that, Teresa had a file this thick, she gave to every board member, had all the information that we could do to put a grant program in place. Some of it followed the Glen Rose model, and some of it was research that she was doing to put a grant program in place. So, and I know councilperson Reiner can attest to this as well. So, I think we're doing everything we can. Should we be held accountable? Sure we should, we're always held accountable. We hold ourselves accountable for what we do. We take the, the board responsibilities very seriously. And so, to say that we're not, or we're not being, we're not doing what we should be doing with everybody, I mean, we could always do more, everybody could do more. But we're doing a pretty good effort in the last couple of months to work closely with the hoteliers.
Okay, so, what we're charged with up here is a fiduciary duty and good stewards of this money. And as long as I'm sitting here, I'm going to at least ask, and I may not have the votes, that we have open meeting, you're getting public money, for goodness sake. Public money, and the public sometimes want to know where it's spent. And, and if you're willing to answer an open records request, and send them an email with all the minutes, that's fine, why not let them in? That's all I'm asking.
Well-
And in executive sessions, in all of these boards I've been on, I bet we haven't had two, in all the boards, in all the years, I bet we haven't had two executive sessions. Because there's very limited scope as far as what those should include. And it usually has to do with personnel or economics. If it, if it's just talking about budget, and by the way, all the things I requested, every board member that you have should have access to that, should have it in their desk already. Same thing with any, anybody, any hotelier that is interested enough or bored enough to want to go through all of that-
Right.
They should be, have access to it, because there, again, this is public money.
Right, and, and I completely understand that. And I appreciate you saying that, because we believe the same thing. So, when some of the hoteliers asked us for financial information, we brought it to them. We didn't talk about it very much in that meeting, because we were talking about marketing things and grant programs, and we finally got to it, and when they, and we, we looked at it together. But we'll be happy to provide that information. As Hayes just said, we've, we are changing our policy so that we will have open meetings, so folks can attend the meetings, and listen to what we say.
Did those financials resemble what is normally presented to this council? Or do they look like financials that were given, are given by every business in this country?
P&Ls and balance sheets.
Okay. If somebody asks for detailed financials, it certainly would be good to hear that you gave it to them.
Yeah, we, we did.
We would have given them anything they asked for. We started with the basics, if they would ask for more, we would have gladly given it to them.
Well, I, I would, I would challenge you on that, because sometimes all they were asking for is to go to the meeting, and you didn't give them that.
Mayor, I'm going to speak here.
Speak when you want, you got a line. We're talking, I thought you were talking about financial statements, that's what I was addressing.
Talking about everything. Again, it's public money, a quasi-public organization, because you're getting that money, therefore, there shouldn't be any, there shouldn't be any walls thrown up between you and them, because they are your stakeholders.
I think the whole community is our stakeholder, sir.
I'm sorry?
The whole community is our stakeholder.
You're making my case. So, anybody that comes in, you shouldn't be questioned, who are you and why are you here? Or, what is your motive?
We don't do that.
And I got that, and they knew who I was.
We do not do that. We, we haven't questioned their motive.
Okay, then you just questioned my motive.
I'm, I'm not sure, I don't understand what you're getting at, we, we did not question their motive.
If a board member calls me and starts questioning my motive, that's, that's the point I'm making. And they're questioning my motive, I can only imagine what some of these folks have gone through at those board meetings. So, the takeaways, what I'd like you to take away here, because I don't want this to go on, on that, and it could, is that, I'm sorry?
Thank God.
Yeah. Trust me, I know how you're feeling that, see? Taxpayers' dollars require transparency.
We understand that completely, that was another topic that we addressed with the attorney that day.
When we give you guys money, we don't want the same money back, and we'll talk about that later, because I would like to sit down. When you said, in my unprofessional approach to this, and you'd like to sit down privately-
That's right.
I'm going to take you up on that, okay? And I'm sorry, this is unprofessional, talking about it in public, but I'm trying to make a point, and this should have happened with these folks, you had the opportunity to talk to everybody in private, and you chose not to, so that's why we're here. You cho, you chose this forum, not me. You can roll your eyes all you want.
Totally disagree.
You can roll your eyes all you want.
I, I offered to have a meeting with you, or anyone on the council, privately, and then if you wanted to go public with it, of course, that's your prerogative.
Next point, relocation. And think about this, because I asked you a year and a half ago, when, when are you going to be out of here? And it was soon. I asked you sixty days ago, or fifty, fifty-five days ago, and you said sixty days. I'm sorry, Teresa. Am I bothering you?
No, I had, I had a board member offer a piece of advice, could, I apologize, could you repeat your request?
Okay, so, I talked to you a year and a half ago about, when are we going to be out of this building? Because we really needed the space, now we really need the space.
I know.
Okay? Fifty-five days ago, you, you said sixty days, now I'm hearing it could be six to eight weeks. At this point, from the time you promised us you'd be out, it's been 563 days, and now we're asking for another six to eight weeks, we're going to be over 600 days. I would ask people in this room, including my fellow councilperson, who's in the, in the residential rental business, if you had a tenant that said, "I'll be out on this date," and 600 days later, they were still there, what, what is our approach?
May I?
Yes.
We had a one-year lease when the Visit Granberry, Inc. started on October 1st of 2015. When the lease is up, I had a conversation with the city manager, Chris Kaufman. He says, "We'll go month to month." He said, "I know you're looking," and we had ongoing conversations. "We're looking for an opportunity." He says, "You're fine, I know when you find a place, you'll go." We thought, we thought a couple of times, we had a location, it didn't work out. Now, we're in the midst of our renovation project, it's very possible we'll be out in June. Your folks, the great city folks, were in the space today, taking measurements and doing some things like that. As soon as we can go, we will go. And we appreciate being part of the city, we appreciate your understanding and letting us stay. We've enjoyed our colleagues at the city, but we know you need the space. And so, we have found the space, we're renovating it, and we will be out there as soon as we can.
Mayor.
Councilman, Councilman, I'm going to pause just a little bit, hold that thought there. Got a couple people want to speak. First of all, the attorney wants to, to describe or define the policy?
First of all, sometimes we're very quickly to mischaracterize things that we don't have knowledge of. My invitation to the meeting was as a representative of the city, after having had phone calls with the Texas Hotel lawyers, to resolve issues regarding the question of open meetings and our contract between the city and the DMO. Just to clarify that, there is nothing in our contract that requires them to have open meetings, which is something that we could have done if we wanted that type of oversight, but we did not. The DMO was formed under the Business Organization Act, and is a private entity, and is therefore not subject to the 551 of the Texas Local Government Code, or 552 for the open meetings. That is a legal issue, and we cannot require them to have those meetings. That was what I advised the city, and that is what, after conferring with their lawyers, we determined was the place. The council at some point elected to turn these funds over to the private entity, and the oversight from that comes from, one, contract. We can contract with them for whatever oversight that we deem necessary, whether that be open meetings, or access by councilpersons, or whatever that is. Secondly, it comes from the tax code. In section 351 of the tax code, it specifically states that we have access, even though it's in our contract, redundantly, we have access to any of the financials at any time that we ask for them. That was my place at the meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, I mean, after the definition, and I am truly disappointed, and I think it was in bad taste, that we would ask a council member to leave a meeting, because I've been to a meeting, never been asked to, to leave. Other people have been to the meetings, never been asked, so it's almost like we're selecting who we want to ask, and who we don't want to ask to leave the meeting. But with that said-
Are you, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Chase.
Are you referring to the meeting that Tony's talking about, that I asked him? What I did is, I advised him that we had elected to have our meetings closed, and I told him that we had two guests that morning, that were going to speak, and I told him, if he wanted to speak, we would make accommodations for him to speak that morning. He said, "No, we'll speak later," and marched back into the room. So, when we finished the open part of our meeting, the people left, and we began our closed part of the meeting that day. That's exactly what happened.
And with, with the end of my comment, though, is, I don't understand what a lot of the privacy can be-
I never asked him to leave.
Okay, okay.
I informed him that our meetings had been closed, which he knew, he knew when he came in that that was the case.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Thank you. Okay, evidently, things have got lost in translation here. What happened was, there was a vigorous debate on whether or not we could have closed meetings. We were advised that, yes, we could have closed meetings, we're a private corporation. To best my knowledge, I missed that last meeting, however, I think technically, that last meeting was the only closed meeting we had, and that wasn't fully closed. There was, there was items on the agenda that were open. Now, I spoke with Mr. Mobley on Friday last week, and I explained to him that I believe that there was going to be a change in that policy, and so everyone's clear here. The board has voted for an open meeting format, okay? There's, doesn't need to be more discussion about a closed meeting, because there are-
Is that private information? Is that private, I mean, you, you discussed that?
Yes.
Okay.
You can go now, Mayor. So, we've been beating this horse for thirty minutes over a closed meeting? I can assure you that this board does everything possible to vet the decisions they make, and there's a lot of thought and research that goes into each decision. And when the city council decided to create a DMO, they made a decision to trust a board of directors to make those decisions. Now, the agenda item was to review the funding agreement. I'm not so sure we're even following the agenda item here. We were asked to provide a check register and hot tax information, that was done. That takes resources away from our everyday duties. Mr. Mobley, you made it very clear, two months ago, or whenever that was, that we needed to be out of this building. to be out of this building. Thirty days ago, we had a budget amendment to provide for that renovation. I would encourage everyone to go look at what's happened in thirty days. It's moving very quickly. This setting doesn't promote common ground for all the stakeholders in this board to work together. It creates divisiveness. I totally disagree on the way this was handled. I would ask in the future that, try to exhaust these questions with the board or board members. Everyone is open to making this very successful. And we have been successful. Look at the trends that we've created since we've taken deficits and turned them into surpluses. It's been historical that the hot tax is going back to the general fund, when before the general fund was supplementing the tourism department. So can we look at the bigger picture? And we can all disagree on how things are handled, but please, let's work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. Oh, I thought you didn't want to speak.
It's my turn.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first of all, I don't know. I don't even know where to start. We have two city councilmen that sit on that board. Chris and Gary here. I don't know why we need more people going into meetings. We've got two great people on that board. If we don't trust either one of them, they need to put a motion up and get rid of them and put their cell phone there or somebody else. I don't want on that board. I sit on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, and we did have executive meetings. We have them here at the City Hall, which it doesn't supposed to leak out, but it used to real bad. It's gotten a lot better. But before I was saying, "We need your room back here, Teresa," that's not one of our councilmen up here or lady can say, "We want you out of here." That's our city manager's job, not ours. And I did ask Chris about it one time, and Chris said he's working with y'all on a month-to-month basis. I don't know what the big rush is, but maybe Mr. Mobley knows more about what we need here than our city manager. I don't know. But I was in town Friday night, ate downtown at five o'clock, and the sidewalks were full, folks. They were full. Saturday morning, my wife went to Weatherford. She said I couldn't get a parking place, and she came by at eleven o'clock, or 10:30, I'm sorry, in the morning. We've got a lot more people coming to Granbury. Somebody's doing something right. I sit on this council, I'm not going to say I'm the oldest one up here, I think Chris is, but I've been on here a long time. I'm telling you, don't get mad at me out there with merchants, but I used to get calls at least once a month, and every councilperson was on here at that time, including the city manager did. "We need more people in town. We need more people in town. What we're going to do, what we're going to do." I haven't had a call except from one merchant. I think they would raise Cain if the sidewalks were poured over with people. Other than that, and that's been a year ago, it's been great. It's been great for our merchants. And I thank you. I thank your board. I know that board's probably getting a hundred thousand a year, a lot more than we are. But thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate it. It's kind of like a kid that, "Don't ride my bicycle unless I can be in there with you riding it." I want you to run your job. That's what we hired y'all for. That's what we give this department to y'all for. Y'all do your job. And not, I mean, I'd hate to have Krogers up here tonight trying to get an extension, but all the arguing we got going on over in closed meeting. I mean, come on, folks, we've got a great city here. We've got a great county. Let's get this thing together. Let's work as a team. I said that on election night, not knowing who was going to be sitting beside me or at the other end. We've got to work together, and we're not doing it. We've got these two great people here. Mr. Mobley, if you don't like one of them on there, make them on the agenda and get rid of one of them. I'm serious. I mean, enough of this, enough. I'm for every hotel in this city. That's why I asked a question about the Hilton. I want to make sure we weren't just doing one thing for the Hilton and not for the rest of people. We need to work with everybody. They've got their group. They're going to promote the town. They're going to get people to come and stay in their hotel, and I'm proud for them. Anything we can do to help, let's do it. That's not our place up here. That's y'all's. Okay? That's it.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. Reiner.
I'll try to make it brief.
Thank you.
I know that everybody may not agree with the way that this was brought about, but our board knows this. No, it is not necessary. It's legal for the BGI Board to have a closed meeting, but what we can do and what we should do are two different things, in my opinion, and the board knows this. I've mentioned this in meetings before. We are dealing with a very large sum of public funding, and I think that what happened tonight, I'm happy about, because we have dialogue now. And we have now created a new policy where we have open meetings. And yes, we do have two good councilmembers, Mr. Allen, on that board, but there's no reason that you or Mr. Mobley or Mr. Corrigan or anyone else shouldn't be able to come into that board or anyone in this audience right here and figure out what is going on with public money. And that's all that I would like to see happen, because I want the public to know what we're doing. I'll tell you what, the board is doing a good job. They're relatively new. I know we've been in existence for three years now, but they are trying, and they're trying to make changes. And I, you know, we're now reaching out, and we have now opened the dialogue in a very interesting way, but now it's open. And that perception of the closed meeting, I think, was the biggest hindrance of all. And I think that now that is changing, and people will be more comfortable walking into meetings, discussing with us as board members, asking questions of the hoteliers, and making changes that will help not only the hoteliers, because it's their money that's being put into this copper, but our community as well. So thank you for coming this evening, board members. I appreciate you being here. That's what I was hoping to accomplish tonight, was just to open that dialogue and do exactly what you said, Mr. Allen, just, you know, move forward. We have a new road ahead, and hopefully, things can change from here on out. And it won't be that perception of we're trying to hide something, because we're not.
Thank you. Mr. Mobley?
So just to hit a couple things, because I know everybody's tired of this. You said that you have voted to allow for open meetings?
Here you said it.
No, we did.
So, but Wednesday, that wasn't the case.
We did it today, sir.
Okay. So right before this meeting, maybe because of this meeting...
What difference it makes, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
Excuse me. So maybe because of this meeting...
If you remember, after the election was held, I called you and asked you if you would like to be on our board, and you turned me down.
I never turned you down.
You didn't join, and I extended the invitation for you to join our board and get to know us a little bit better. I wish you would have.
It's the council's duty to...
No, I just wanted to make sure you knew that we'd love to have you.
It's the council's duty to appoint the representative from the city, but thank you for the offer now. I'd love to take advantage of it.
No, I called you after the election and offered you the position that Rose Myers had to let go.
But it's not your job to do that.
Encouraged you, I should say, sir.
Okay.
You didn't take us up on it.
It's not my...
Okay, okay.
It's not my position to take you up on it. That's what you're not...
The council has to give nominations, and that wasn't a nomination.
I understand. And I would love to sit down with you and go over the numbers, okay? Now that we have them. And Mr. Couch, I'd love for you to be there, because your term "historical returns," let's look at that and prove how historical. The last point, and Mr...
That I'm invited?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I thought you said I was invited.
Well, you are.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'll show you how all this works.
I know you know how.
The space, space, and it's... Mr. Allen said, "I don't know how Mr. Mobley knows, because he knows apparently more than the city manager." I'm echoing what the city manager is relaying to me, and that we are busting at the seams here, and we need the space. And I will ask the city manager, "Am I making this up?"
No. We need the space, and we are working with them.
So, no.
I think everybody that has spoke on this subject from their side to our side is being factual.